Thank you so much. Today is Monday, August 2, 2021. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please? Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Hughes? Councilmember Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Thank you so much. At this time, we'll go ahead for our call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comments to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. At this time, is there anybody who would like to speak during call to the public? Is there anybody online that would like to speak at this time?
I do not see any hands raised, Mayor.
Okay. I did not either, so I will go ahead and close call to the public. Item 6A. This is a proclamation declaring August 7, 2021, as National Purple Heart Day in the Town of Florence, Arizona. At this time, I'm going to ask councilmember John Anderson, who served nine months with ROTC, and councilmember Johnny Mendoza, who served our country in the United States Army All right. So this evening, we have... Want to stand over here? This evening, we have our Purple Heart proclamation. And we did have a representative that was going to join us this evening that could not join us. So, we are going to have another celebration where we're also inviting all of our Purple Heart veterans to join us and be honored.
Whereas Purple Heart Day is observed on August 7 each year and is a time for Americans to remember and honor the brave men and women who were either wounded on the battlefield or paid the ultimate sacrifice with their lives and...
Whereas, one contemporary interpretation of the color of the Purple Heart is the color represents the blood of all those who have made sacrifices in war, but traditionally, the color is thought to represent the courage of those who served.
Whereas, the Purple Heart began as something called the Badge of Military Merit, an honor that was created by General George Washington in 1782. The honor was only presented to enlisted soldiers who had performed a singular, monetarius, meritus action, and only a handful of these were awarded and...
Whereas, the spirit of the Badge of Military Merit would be honored again in 1932 when the Purple Heart Award was created to honor the bicentennial of George Washington's birthday. World War I saw the first Purple Hearts awarded to soldiers presented on the sites of the final encampment of the Continental Army in Windsor, New York and...
Whereas, the Purple Heart took many years to evolve into what it's known today. When General Douglas MacArthur signed the General Order Number 3 establishing the modern Purple Heart, it was not authorized to be awarded to anyone except those serving in the Army or the Army Air Corps. A presidential order was signed in 1942 opened the Purple Heart to all branches of the military, including the U.S. Coast Guard and...
Whereas, World War II saw the Purple Heart change from an award for matarious service to one honoring those who were wounded or killed in combat. Criteria for receiving a Purple Heart has also changed over the years. Military members may be eligible for this honor if they are wounded or killed as a result of an act of terrorism or in qualifying circumstances where friendly fire was involved. Now therefore, I Tara Walter, Mayor of the Town of Florence, Arizona, do hereby proclaim August 7, 2021, as Purple Heart Day in the Town of Florence.
Mr. Councilmember Anderson, do you want to give a message about feeding the eagle at this time?
Well, as most of you know, we have the Vet Memorial over here in our park area. Just... Am I saying it right? I always get turned around. But, you know, I always ask people to come and feed the eagle. And that means just to come and honor our veterans. And you can do that anytime, any day. Just come down, have a cup of coffee, walk over and sit down on the concrete wall and think about your loved ones who served. And I say "served" because we still have a lot of people serving right now, and we want to honor them as well. They're all veterans. Thank you.
For this next agenda item, we are going to be tabling this item until the next meeting as they could not be with us at this time. And we will have this at the next meeting regarding the water.
I'm going to announce Mr. Benjamin Bitter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm excited to be back before you tonight with the final version of the brand standards manual that outlines the use of the town seal and the town logo that the council recently approved. We're going to go ahead and put these on the screen, and I don't intend to go through in great detail all of these, the finer points of our brand standards. But again, this packet is available to each of you within the packet and to the general public as well. Just generally speaking, when you look at our branding, we have, again, the seal, which is on the left, and the logo, which is on the right. The seal is reserved more for official communications, so it will be kind of representative of official discussions between the town and its residents. So you may see this on stationery, on letterhead. It may appear on business cards to a certain degree, and it may be used on flags and those type of things. Our town logo is actually the one that would be more prominent, I guess, in the public if you want to think of it that way. It is more of our digital representation. It's how we present ourselves to the public. And so, we'll go through a few examples here later on that shows a little bit better of how each of those are incorporated. But just so you can see the standard brand colors and the offerings, there are the full-color versions, and then a black and white and a reverse, so that these can each be used in print. They can be used in terms of newsprint, as well as in full-color prints. Can be used and matched with color correct combinations on embroidery or on really anything we do. So, we're sure that the logo is maintaining its integrity throughout its reproduction. And with that, there are, as you've seen in this slide, for example, that there are the primary brand colors, which are the orange, the... I can't remember what the official name is up there. Where did it go? Tangerine and yellow, I can't remember. But orange, tangerine, and yellow are the three colors that are the primary brand colors or the hues, the orange hues. And then you'll see at the bottom, two separate types of hues. Those are the blue hues and the desert hues. The brand and the logo and the seal can both be reproduced using each of those segments of three colors. And so, that is something that, again, you can see later on as we go through the presentation. We have set fonts, so as we're using our fonts throughout our communications, again, through letterheads, throughout our emails or what have you, those will have standardized fonts, so we're making sure that we're maintaining our standards and looking similarly across the organization. So, those are in the book as well. It talks about spacing and making sure that we're providing ample space around the logo so that it's not cramped, it doesn't feel like it's secondary on the page, but there's actual meaning there. We talk about alternate marks, so not necessarily logos, but elements of the logo that can be used on its own or to help enhance our brand. We're talking about new police badges, new fire departments' logos, new police patches. All of these type of things will develop and continue to develop as we're developing the brand as well. These are representations that we've worked with each of the departments to come up with something that we think is positive and continues to carry forth the similar branding message that we already have. Just as a note, if you look at the police badge, that's actually using the blue hues that are approved colors. So, the police lettering, as well as the kind of line that looks a little white on the computer, it's actually a lighter blue, which is the approved color. And then the seal is on the patch as a darker blue. So, again, using those same hues. One of the elements of the seal and the logo that we're particularly trying to stress are these rounded corners. You see that really well in the mark of the logo. And so, what we're trying to carry through all of our elements is kind of this vision of rounded corners. Whether we're rounding a corner from, you know, a past to a brighter future, or whether we're just being cool with our design elements, I don't really care. But that's where we are with our branding standards. Each department has its own representation, should they choose to use that. Again, it's just the logo with their name, but there's set guidelines in terms of how those are developed. There are some prohibited uses, so things that we do not want to see and do not hope to see with our logo. Again, as we talked when we were coming out of our last discussion with our logo, these are things that we kind of saw a little bit with our old logo, and so we want to make sure that we avoid these with our new logo. And so, these are things that we don't want to see. Even down to door graphics on vehicles, or where we can place certain things on the vehicle itself, one of the things that we found is that we're required to have for official use only on our vehicles. And so, that logo and that combination has been designed and will be placed on our vehicles as well. Sample PowerPoint templates, so again, moving forward with our brand. And you can see here where the hues start to come together, where you start to see those same color palettes working together. This will be the way that the town presents itself to you all as the council, to the public, and to presentations. We anticipate using this readily throughout the future. And again, just some additional slides that could be used as part of the template. Letterhead, again, you can see kind of at the top and the bottom, there are those rounded corners again. Still incorporates the seal to make note that it's an official communication. And then you can see at the bottom, there's the 1866 alternate mark, which carries forward the history of our community. And then you can't really see on this screen, but within each of the address blocks at the bottom, there is the symbol or the mark for the river separates, for example, Main Street and PO Box and/or the phone number and those type of things. So, many of those elements of our brand are carried through on the letterhead. Similar with the business cards, you see that on one side with the logo, on the other with the seal. And again, that same message carried through, that same brand carried through. Email signatures will look similar, have the seal as it's an official communication, but then also provide links back to social media channels and contact information for each employee. You can see on these shirts, for example, how the Town of Florence will be represented. Again, we have a myriad of shirts that are available to town employees and hats as well, so not to go too much into detail. But that's generally how you'll start to see the Town of Florence branded throughout our organization. Again, this is not something we plan on doing overnight. This is something that will take time, and we will do over the coming years. And so, with that, Mayor and council, happy to answer any questions you may have.
I just have a quick question on this slide in particular. I noticed that right away that it says a seal is not authorized for use on hats. Is that just talking about Town of Florence employee hats? Or you're talking about if somebody were to take the logo and make their own?
Yeah. So, when we talk the seal, that's the circular one. So, that is not something we'd want to see on hats because it's not our outward-facing communication. So, when we see the Town of Florence logo, not the seal, so this logo with the squirkle on the top and then the Town of Florence stylized lettering, that is a more visual and a quicker reference symbol that there are a Town of Florence employee or they're representing the Town of Florence.
So, for memorabilia type of use, they could still use the seal? That the seal not being authorized for use on hats or for other items that somebody might want to make or purchase, they could still use the seal?
Yeah. It would depend on the use. For example, we may do like pins or those type of things would work better with the seal. To put a logo on a lapel pin would look funky. And so, a lot of it depends on the medium that you're looking at. But what we really want to do is make sure that the seal is protected as an official communication from the town. It represents the official town. But then, the logo is how we are recognized, and so, we want to get the logo out as much as possible.
Madam Mayor, councilmember, I just wanted to emphasize that folks couldn't, can't use our seal or our logo to print shirts, for example, unless the town gives them approval ahead of time. It's our copyright, our copyright. So, we don't encourage t-shirt manufacturers or other folks to use our essence, if you will, without prior approval.
I'm just saying, if there's somebody who is approved, if that was something, I understand the difference, but... Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson, I can't hear what you're asking.
Yeah. You can, I mean, again, we can, this is available on the agenda packet as well as those that are watching on Zoom, and you can, you know, those that are sitting here in the chamber, you can see... Sorry, Mayor, don't mean to use a laser on your eyeball, but yeah, the symbol for the river that is within our seal is carried through at the bottom of the letterhead as
Any other comments from our council? Councilmember Mendoza?
One thing I'd like to see is with the town logo, maybe making lapel pins with years of service, five-year, 10-year, 15-year, so we can present to employees that have been here for a certain amount of time.
It's an excellent suggestion. I agree. Any other questions or comments? I want to say thank you for all of the work that has gone into this. This has been something that has been in the process, as you can see, for quite some time. And just to reiterate, following the approval of the logo and the seal, our consultant and our staff have worked very hard to develop this brand that is keeping the integrity of our community as we continue to push and advertise, become a destination, and show our professionalism to those who are looking at coming to Florence. And, Mr. Billingsley?
Madam Mayor, I would like to recognize Mr. Ben Bitter individually. He has spent hundreds of hours working on the brand standards. The artwork that we ended up with was, through the consultant, yes, but the brainchild of Mr. Bitter, following the council meeting where we had the work session. A group of us facilitated by Ben Bitter went into the conference room for several hours and talked through the comments from council in terms of what the expectation was and what was important about Florence. And Mr. Bitter worked very hard on concepts that are very close to what you see today. This has been a big point of pride for him, and I want the opportunity to thank Ben individually for the hard work he's put into this, and we're very proud as a staff of the final product.
And I was going to tie into that, and I'm just going to add one more component. The fact that in addition to all of that, you reached out and had individual meetings with all of the council members, and you took all of the feedback that we provided, and you brought it forward in such a very well-heard, and it was shown from the product. And you brought forward a package, and good job. We appreciate you. Is there anything that you would like to...
No, I appreciate the team effort. It's been a great process, and I think it's something our community can be proud of, both kind of as an iteration to our former logo, where we've still paid homage and respect and tribute to that, carried it forward, and something that's also modern. So, you all, as council, have been great to provide insight through a very difficult process. This is not an easy thing to do, and you all obviously have done a lot of the work too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is item number D. This is a presentation of the Arizona Clerks Association Clerk of the Year Award. Ms. Lisa Garcia is our deputy town manager. She was awarded the 2021 Clerk of the Year Award on July 28, 2021, at the Arizona Municipal Clerks Association Annual Meeting. Below are the comments that were read at the meeting. This is the ultimate servant leader, always reframing what they are asked to do and applying a "how can I help?" viewpoint to the request. This person takes on extra assignments and special projects and exhibits exemplary leadership skills. This character, revealing pattern of behavior, has greatly influenced the organization as well as the community for the past 26 years. This individual is a highly skilled clerk and knows how to build a collaborative project, team, that gets things done. This person is fearless and embracing innovation and spends time helping others embrace change. This person supports the mentorship and friendship in their municipality, the community, the AMCA, the IIMC. This individual builds strong relationships with council, staff, the community, and their peers with a supportive and caring emphasis that is highly sought after. This person served on the AMCA board and serves IIMC. She spearheaded the task force for redistricting Region 13 boundaries, and she also spearheaded the AMCA task force to develop the strategic plan that we use today. It is with great pleasure and strong agreeance that we award Lisa Garcia the Clerk of the Year Award. This nomination was submitted on May 4, 2021. I would like to redo the letter of her recommendation. I would then like our town manager to say a few words, and I would like all of our council to have an opportunity to say a few words, and then I'd like us all to go onto the floor and present her with an award. Dear Ms. Jaminsky, please find the attached AMCA nomination form for Lisa Garcia. She is the ultimate servant leader, always reframing what she is asked to do with a lens applied of "how can I help?" And with all the extra assignments and special project leadership she has undertaken, she has demonstrated her ability to lead in any situation. It is a character-revealing pattern of behavior that can greatly influence an organization as well as a community, and Lisa has influenced both in her 26 years of service. Lisa is highly skilled, is a highly skilled clerk and knows how to build a collaborative team project that builds organizational community and gets things done. Lisa's fearless and embracing innovative innovation and spends her dedicated time helping others to embrace the change. She reaches her hands across the desk, the hall, the municipality, as well as the AMCA and the IIMC clerk community to provide support, mentorship, and real friendship. Lisa builds relationship with the town staff and the community and across the association organizations with a supportive and caring emphasis that is highly sought after. She served six years on the Arizona Municipal Clerks Board and is the current Region 13 Director for the IIMC, and spearheaded the task force for redistricting of the Region 13 to provide more leadership within the region. It is with all of these reasons and more that I recommend Lisa Garcia as the 2021 Clerk of the Year. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our town manager to also share a few words.
I promised to not embarrass Lisa tonight, so I will not, if you were looking for that. She is the definition of a servant leader. She doesn't really like to be recognized. She likes to be appreciated. She likes to be collaborated with. She likes to be part of processes and make a difference, as you read, Mayor, in innovation and bringing...
of processes and make a difference, as you read, Mayor, in innovation and bringing folks together towards cooperation. The clerk, I believe, is the cornerstone of our democracy. Clerks are throughout our government, from local governments, state governments, federal governments, counties, and districts of courts. The clerk is the centerpiece of records, record-keeping, and policy, to make sure that everyone is on the right track and the track that has been directed by the legislative bodies that govern. So that makes the clerk the most important position, I believe, in any organization, whether that be a city organization or any of the others that I listed above. What we have before us in the town of Florence is the Clerk of the Year for the State of Arizona. That's no small task. That's no small feat, and we should be very proud and celebrate to have somebody of such esteem that works for the town of Florence. She's achieved an achievement that most of us will never see in our career, to be the very best at her profession, and it's something that we all strive to do. So with those words, I say with great pride that I get to work every day when I come to Florence with Lisa Garcia. Thank you.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Ms. Garcia, as a new council member, you have made this journey a lot easier than I thought it was going to be. You've answered all my questions. You know what you're doing, and I am glad that you are on our side, on our team, and I thank you for all that you do.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
I think that a lot of the points have been sort of stolen in the presentation, but I just want to emphasize that you're always professional. You know all of us as council members on a personal level and a professional level, and you have this demeanor of being able to provide input in a way, in a different perspective than maybe we would see it. And I appreciate that so much about you. I appreciate how much you can tell, by the way even I breathe, whether I'm frustrated or angry or how I'm feeling about a situation. You always provide such great feedback and direction for a different way to think of things. And I really do appreciate you, like I said, in a professional manner and as calling you my friend. So just appreciate everything that you do. I know you're always amazing, and so it's great to see that somebody else also recognizes your accomplishments. We appreciate you so much.
Councilmember Neal?
Congratulations. Honestly, they slipping, they should have done gave you this years ago, on the real. From the day I walked in, you've been nothing but helpful, big smile. I don't know how, because everything you have to deal with and put up with, nah, no thank you. You are awesome. You are well-deserving of it. Like I say, you should have about three or four of these on your shelf. If it was up to me and the rest of the council, I'm pretty sure you would. But congratulations, it is well-deserved.
Councilmember Anderson?
Well, the thing that surprised me, we said she'd been our clerk for 26 years. She must have started when she was about 12, right? But she has done an outstanding job for all those years. I think we all consider her a friend, and I've never seen that she wasn't smiling. And I know that we all recognize her, but I know the people throughout the state recognize her. When you go to any of these other meetings, everybody in the state knows our clerk, and they always have nice things to say about her. I go to the Penale Partnership, people there know her. When we go to the league and talk to people at the league, either that, you know, I know a couple clerks come up and told me, you know, how Lisa had helped them in their town to help them do their job. So she not only helps us, she helps everybody in the state. So Lisa, you know, we love you and just thank you so much.
Ms. Garcia, would you like to say a few words before we meet to present you with your award?
I will just say that, for me, working for the town of Florence has been the greatest career anybody could have, in that every day in Florence, Arizona, has always been, I've always been the Clerk of the Year because everyone here is so kind and the citizens are so great to work with. And even when people are mad, they know that the city is working through to do the best job we can for our citizens. So it's with great pride that I serve all of you. It's with great pride that I serve our department heads. It's with great pride that I serve our manager, and it's with esteemly great pride that I serve our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, council, let's present our Clerk of the Year, her award. Our next item on the agenda is item number seven, which is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote. As part of the consent agenda, unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A, adoption of resolution number 179521. This is a resolution of the town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, approving the second supplement development agreement and lot sale prohibit, prohibitions agreement by and between the town of Florence and municipal corporation and Mesquite Trails Phoenix ASLI 8 LLC, which is a Delaware limited liability. Item B, which is approval of a contract with Vigilant Solutions to purchase three license plate readers using Region 14 Education Services Center Cooperative Contract 1210 for Security Solutions Products and Services. This is supplemental in an amount not to exceed $66,295. And item C, which is approval of accepting the Register of Demands ending June 30, 2021, in the amount of $4,977,880.54. Ladies and gentlemen, is your consent agenda, is there any item you would like removed at this time?
I'd like to have 7C.
Okay, item 7C. With that, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda, removing item 7C.
I'll make a motion to accept the, approve the consent agenda, items A and B, with removal of item C.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes. Becky, I just had a question about the unfunded liability pay-down for the police and the fire.
Yes.
I know we've been working on that for some time. How close are we getting this totally paid down?
Well, what we did was we totally paid off the police liability, and we paid a partial on the fire. So, just a second, let me confer with Carl, because he keeps track of those. About 1 million left, so it's manageable within the town. And you'll see coming up next council meeting, a new posting for the liability itself, showing how the town intends to pay that off. And it will be through excess fund balance or through excess revenues. But we should be able to handle that very easily in the next several years, probably in the next three to five years.
Well, I just want to congratulate you, because I know we're one of the few towns that have paid off that fund, correct?
Correct. And our liability, luckily for us, our liability was not as much as other communities. Some of them are facing astronomical amounts, but for us, we were very manageable. And one of the good side things, or one of the good effects that's come from this is that our overall rate for PSPRS in the police department has dropped. So our contribution rate for this year was, I think it was lowered by two and a half to three percent. So that's a good cost savings for the town itself.
Thank you. With that, I make a motion that we approve item 7C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same side. And that motion carries. Item eight is unfinished business. This is discussion, approval, disapproval of the downtown commercial revitalization grant. At this time, I am going to call forward Mr. Elan Valander.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. We're back for a second session on this grant item. This evening, I'd like to just do a quick recap of what we've talked about in the past. So the rehabilitation program, as it is currently written, utilizes $200,000 from the CIP budget, specifically the items, the downtown revitalization. In addition, this grant will take the $50,000 that is addressed for the fire sprinkler grant that's in the CIP, and combine those $2 amounts to create a total of $250,000 for the downtown rehabilitation, commercial rehabilitation grant. The purpose of the grant is primarily to address deteriorating property conditions and promote and encourage the use and occupancy of the commercial buildings. The program was designed with the CDBG grant in mind. Reimbursements will be provided at a 75% rate for projects that correct documented interior and exterior building and life safety violations. A maximum award for each grant is $50,000 per building. Reimbursements are available on a monthly basis. Eligible participants will include any property owners and tenants of commercial buildings located within the Florence Downtown Redevelopment Area and with zoning code, or zoning of downtown commercial, B1, B2, NO, and PUD. Nonprofits are eligible to apply for this grant. Applications, the application period will be from July 1st through May 30th. On this revision of the grant, staff took some time to review the work session and review the comments that council made throughout that work session, looking for opportunities where there was consistency and agreement amongst council for items that should be added in. With that, we came to the conclusion that there are three items that were discussed at a level of quorum that we added in. These are reflected on page five and page six of the document. The first of which is in regards to requirement for a title search and title insurance. This was added in at the applicant's expense and responsibility. That's on page five. The second one was cancellation of the grant for projects that have stalled for more than 180 days. One of the concerns that was expressed was for projects that wouldn't move towards completion. So we tied this similarly to permits. If a project hasn't done any work for a total of 180 days, then it is eligible to be canceled under this term. That's on page six. And then finally, we added in a section on page five of prioritization for project selection. That is one that we would definitely like council to take a look at on the, number two on page five under the application review process. There are several bullet points that represent the prioritization list. If there are items on there that are of concern or that you would like added, please let us know now. Otherwise, the grant has remained primarily the same. And in addition, there were items that were brought up at the work session meeting, work session meeting and through other conversations that were not addressed in the document, but I will address them here, just for your consideration. The first of which was addressing risk. So assessing risk of town investments into buildings that won't end up with the CFO. There were, there were some suggestions for various items that we could add in, such as ensuring that the applicant would have sufficient cash reserves to fund a project, that there would be an identified occupant in place, business plan, et cetera, as well as title was addressed, but we addressed that one in the document. Second, again, was prioritization, addressed in the document, and then the third was funding source. Questions were brought up about the appropriate funding source for this grant. So the, number two on, this sounds weird, but the second one under risk was addressed in the document, and the one under prioritization was addressed in the document. So, as staff, we're just looking for a vote on this. Vote of no would mean the council would not authorize the grant program, and staff would continue to work with council to develop concepts for the use of the downtown revitalization fund. A vote of yes would mean the council would authorize the Florence Downtown Commercial Rehabilitation Program. Staff would negotiate and enter into conference, excuse me, a contract with the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce, and begin advertising the program in the redevelopment area.
Thank you very much for that presentation, and I appreciate how you incorporated the feedback and comments from our council as a whole and addressed them. At this time, council, do you have any? Councilmember Rodriguez?
Sorry, I had a question on page six, item five. I just wanted to clarify point number five there, where it talks about the progress has stopped for a period of 180 days. I felt like that verbiage was maybe a little bit gray, and that they could make a small amount of progress and still considered making progress. What do we consider stopped, I guess, or how is that going to be defined?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Rodriguez, I can address that. We tied this to a standard building permit as it sets. If work or inspections are not called within that 180 days, then it becomes expired. Can, it can be, and we do it all the time, it can be renewed. There's various reasons that it's stopped. Any kind of emergency health or anything like that, and we have no problem renewing that permit, and that's a no-charge renew. So that's why we did that. It was a little bit cleaner for us, because it does attach it to a code set that we have adopted.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Mendoza, did you have anything? Councilmember Anderson?
Yes, I have a concern about the Chamber of Commerce involvement. This is nothing negative on the Chamber, I'm glad that they volunteered to do this, but I just don't see the value added. As a matter of fact, I think it's, could be just something that would prolong this a little bit longer. So, I would rather see that approval be done by our town staff, you know, rather than getting the Chamber involved.
So, I have two questions. So, my first question will be a legal one. So, this is for our attorney. Is this something that we can legally administer in-house or is this something as in prior programs where we have been, I don't want to use the word directed, but that's the first word coming to my head, guided to using either like IDA or the local chamber?
Mayor, members of the council, there's nothing that requires the council to use the Chamber to administer the funds. I think it was thought of by staff as a recommendation to help in the potential argument that one could make that it helps that a nonprofit is distributing the money. But it's not, I mean, it's not a death knell to the program if the Chamber is not used. So, I think it's purely your prerogative what the council desires.
Okay, and my second part is I do note that our Chamber Director is in the audience this evening, and I'd like to give you an opportunity to come up and I know that you have great relationships with the business community and put together amazing events to drive business. You've partnered with Local First Arizona. So, could you share with staff, not staff, our council, see, I called us staff, we're not, we're council?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers and staff. I would humbly suggest that it would be exact opposite, Councilmember Anderson. As an advocate for business, I think that it would be in the Chamber's best interest to be on Alon and whoever else is on the council or on the committee to put this together and get it out as soon as possible. We are with those businesses on a daily basis, saying hello to them, getting updates on where they are, how close they are to opening, and doing everything we can to get them going and getting them and opening the front door. So, I think one hundred percent that we would be the person calling Alon, saying, I just got it in my hands, can I come meet with you right now, rather than it being any kind of delay. And also, we're, you know, on the front line, so we've already been out there actively trying to get the businesses to get their paperwork together, making sure they know about these loans or these grants, excuse me, and have been working with them so that they're ready to apply as soon as you do approve the program.
Oh, don't get me wrong, I appreciate your help and I would expect that, so thank you very much.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. I just, like I said, I'm going to be the first person that Alon's not going to be ignoring my phone calls, trust me, on getting these things out, so.
Well, and you both have an excellent professional working relationship.
Yeah, and we're, yeah, we talk almost every day already, so a delay is not really in the cards for something like this, respectfully. Thanks.
Councilmember Anderson, did you have anything additional?
No, I still think it's a unnecessary step. I appreciate the Chamber being involved and I would expect them to be involved and I expect them to help advertise this as any other project that's going on in town. I just don't see the value added of them having to approve anything.
I do also see the value in the fact that it does give a local nonprofit in our community that's working with that business community additional ability to host events with that funding. I don't know what you have planned with that funding, so I'm not putting words into your mouth. I'm just saying, for example, you do bring events into our community and this could also be another driver to utilize that funding in that mechanism as well. Did you already have a plan?
Actually, it would be included, the monies that would come from it would actually be added to the advertising campaigns that I'm already currently working with Alon on, with the website and future advertisements in magazines and things and other advertising avenues. That's what it was going to be added to. So, it was all part of that whole plan.
All right, thank you. And Councilmember Neal? Okay. All right. For me, going through this process has been very intense in conversations, both hearing from our business community, hearing from our council, hearing from our staff. And I truly want to say thank you to everybody that participated and came out to be heard. I feel that in looking over this program, there are, there is a fair balance and collection and ultimately, all of our council's goal is to help and support our Main Street and continue the revitalization efforts that are happening. I do not have any further comments or suggestions regarding this program. And with that, I'll, go ahead, Councilmember.
I had one more quick question, just recalling our conversation, I apologize if I missed it, but we had also talked about loan opportunities and how we were going to discuss that with potential applicants as well. Is that something that we're still planning on doing? Have you set those up?
Yeah, so actually, that is addressed in the document. It will be part of the pre-application meeting that we do have with each business. I have had communications with some traditional lending institutions as well as SBA lenders and I have a meeting up and coming with another group that does micro lending and gap funding. So, yes, it will be a part of the conversation and we will look for every opportunity that we have to provide the resources to our businesses to succeed.
Thank you so much.
All right, if there's no further discussions or comments, I would like a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the downtown commercial revitalization grant.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Our next item is our manager's report.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I'll do my best to be brief. The first item that I have this evening involves our Autism City approval that the council challenged staff to provide, promote. I have an update for council. As of now, twenty-seven of our fire employees have been through the training, fifteen of our police department employees have been through the training, and I have something I want to read real quick into the record. IBCCES provides a series of certifications that empower professionals to be leaders in their field and improve the outcomes for individuals they serve. These programs are recognized around the world as leading benchmark for training and certification in the areas of autism and other cognitive disorders. One in fifty-four children are diagnosed with autism and one in eleven are diagnosed with ADHD. This rapidly growing population dramatically increases the challenges for educators. Our training and certifications ensure that teachers are armed with the knowledge and best practices to improve learning outcomes. Our innovative use of technology and user-friendly format makes it possible for us to provide training around the globe. And that's from IBCCES. And in front of me this evening, I have been made aware that Mayor Tara Walter has been certified for autism and sensory awareness training and the rest of the council members are available as well to receive this certification. So, thank you.
How do we do that?
Get with Trenton, Councilmember. I think it's something that Trenton's been sharing.
Okay, thank you.
With regard to my report, and we briefly mentioned this at the last meeting, the intercession programs were very successful over the summertime and hopefully, that follows with our before and after school programs that are provided with the Florence District and other schools that choose to participate. In addition, record numbers in terms of the aquatic center this summer as well, even though we had a couple dust events, Hezekiah, that made things difficult for staff. And then our chlorine system went down last week, so we've had some challenges to overcome, but thank you to your team has for getting the pool up and running this weekend. I know that it was challenging for them based on the report I got Friday. Some other items to highlight, the fitness center has five hundred and twenty members, that's well beyond any possibilities that we ever would have considered in the past. Usually was around a hundred and fifty to two hundred in past years, so it's a tremendous impact that the twenty-four hour fitness center has had, as well as our agreement with Pinau County with respect to the use of that center. One of the things, if you take note of the economic prosperity session, we have three buildings that are drawing closer to closing their renovations and joining the market, three sixty-three main, the Quinn Building, and of course, the coffee shop that's been talked about previously, and several other commercial lots are now under contract in downtown Florence. As a matter of fact, the town just approved another facade grant as recent as last week for the Lutheran Church. So, it's so exciting to see that facade program all of a sudden become very viable with multiple applications and multiple projects. Partnerships and relationships, I'm happy to say that the town was able to partner with the Chamber again to make the Chamber of Commerce the designation under the Arizona State Department of Tourism as our tourism center. And staff is working diligently with Arizona at Work, Central Arizona College, Pinau County, SBDC, which is a small business organization in our county, Chicanos por la causa, and Prestamos with, to try and provide training for our local businesses. As you know, two years ago, we did a training program through CAC. Alon has been working hard on these new partnerships to continue and enhance that training process and provide some help for our local businesses. The last thing I wanted to talk about was two councils meetings ago, council brought forward a concern, a question regarding the sidewalk on Ruggles, specifically adjacent to the post office. That project, the town's been working on for quite some time, but we've had some challenges with utility conflicts. The town was able to get a power pole moved, which was important, as well as work with Southwest Gas and Century Link to get that project completed, and it was completed over the weekend. So, that's my manager's report.
Thank you very much. Item number ten is our department reports. Is there anybody on council that has any questions for any of our department heads at this time? All right, I did not have any questions either, so thank you for writing amazing reports that were clear and comprehensive. This is our second call to the public. Call to the public is open under the same premise as the first. Is there anybody that would like to speak at this time?
I do not see any hands raised, Mayor.
All right, going ahead and closing the second call to the public. This is our call to the council, for current events only. Councilmember Mendoza?
Well, we've been in school for about a week and a half now and we are short bus drivers, so if there's anyone out there that wants a job, if USD is looking for bus drivers. In saying that, I know that parents give a lot of stuff to teachers for their classrooms and stuff, and we kind of forget the bus drivers, they kind of need things in there too. So, you know, the other day, my wife and I gave some tissues to one of our bus drivers because we know our daughter had a runny nose, and I'm like, you know what, we don't do that very often for our bus drivers, so, and they're very, I don't know how they're doing their job. I know that there are like twenty bus drivers down right now and they are getting our kids to school and back home. You know, the first day, I think they had a couple problems, but since then, they've kind of made everything, everything is working well. So, they're doing really good and if you see a bus driver out there, you know, give him a little thank you or something because they're doing a heck of a job out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Neal?
I'd like to, first off, congratulate Lisa again. I've heard a whole lot this week about the state of our council. It's been talked about, some awful actually, just to be honest. It's really bothering me because everyone seems to think that there's two different councils, like there's two different teams. In fact, last week, I felt that way myself. It made me think of the reasons why I got on this council was to make decisions for Florence, to help Florence. And if that decision goes down to the wire, that's what it is. I'm not here on Team A, I'm not here on Team B, I ain't gonna never be on Team A or Team B. I'm here for Florence. And I really hope that this council can get it together and come together for Florence because I feel that we got a great team and it's going in a great direction, except for us. And I would like to also thank Florence PD for the help that they have given the schools for the children getting out of school and getting to their parents safely because of the traffic. And you guys did a great job, I think it's wonderful, instead of kids darting in between cars, you got all the cars parked across the street, chief, it was wonderful. When I went out there seeing it, I thought it was great. So, I just wanted to thank you and thank your staff again for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Just to sort of piggyback on what Councilmember Bonnie said is that with the bus drivers, they've been amazing. I know personally, my youngest, who's four, he got left behind one day, he was running too late getting his shoes on, and they even made the extra loop around to come back to try to pick him up and we told him to stay inside even though we heard the bus was so eager to get out there. And so, just the fact that they even take that extra initiative to make an extra loop around, I know they're stressed out and I know that they're understaffed right now, so I just want to send my appreciation to them. I also want to echo the same sentiments to Lisa again, congratulations, very well deserved. Also, I wanted to, I guess, speak to the commercial development downtown and the businesses that are opening and how my excitement is when I look around and see our community rallying around our business community, as well as the excitement that they see when these new businesses are opening up. So, I love the direction that we're going right now as a community. I feel that we are on the right path, especially with this grant program opening up. I can, I hear a lot about the excitement from potential business owners as well as for people who currently own these buildings. So, I'm very excited this was approved tonight and I look forward to seeing our community thrive.
Well said. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes, I did get a thank you note today about Ruggles. Thank you for getting that fixed. I also heard today that they're putting railing around McFarland. Finally, good deal. The other thing that I wanted to mention, I like the idea of renaming Gopher Street or Gopher Way, whatever you want to call it. So, what do we need to do to approve that? Do we need to make something official on that?
Mayor, councilmember, taken care of.
Okay.
Taken care of. What, sorry, I'm not on the agenda. We can talk about it later.
Okay, thank you. Well, I can talk about anything, all right? I guess that pretty well covers everything that I've got. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I apologize because I couldn't catch every word and I know Councilmember Rodriguez as well, could you catch us up on that last part that we missed? We were trying very intently.
Gopher Way, there was a request made to name the street that goes to the high school, Gopher Way. As it turns out, it's not a city street, it's a
It's a private drive, so it's not going to be an issue.
And I love that because I was actually going to bring that up as well, so perhaps during my call, I'll address that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I did want to just share a few things. First, I wanted to say thank you. We have our Chamber Director here with us this evening. He had brought forward and collaborated with us on the vision of an autism awareness community. We've had many meetings. We met with Mayor Giles. We have some great partners within our community as well. I wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Anderson, because Councilmember Anderson actually advocated for our council to be trained as well. So you are the reason why we are a part of this opportunity for training, so thank you.
Good deal. Thank you.
For some further clarification on what IBCCES is, they provide education and training, which ensures appropriate accommodations and next-level service are provided within our community to neurodivergent individuals. Our focus is facilitating the diversity, equity, and inclusion initiative, thus becoming all-encompassing. At any time that we can positively impact the attitude of our community and we can continue to perpetuate that, to create an all-inclusive community and environment, this is a win-win. We want people to come to Florence and always have a positive experience in this program and this training that is provided to our employees and our council, our staff, our citizens in regards to businesses, is helping push that forward. We're really excited for all the new businesses that have been coming to downtown Main Street. We continue to work hard for the community, and we are making positive progress. It has been a pleasure to watch the progress that the Quinn Building, in regards to it being restored and brought back to life. Tom and his wife, Lynn Smith, saved this building, and they have created a absolutely beautiful commercial property right here on our Main Street. Two days ago, it was listed for sale for $250,000, and currently, it is under contract. In addition, another building on Main Street known as the Murphy's Drugstore at 310 North Main Street also went under contract on July 20th, so we're looking forward to these commercial developments that are continuing to push forward in our community. Lisa, again, we would be remiss if we did not say thank you. Thank you for continuing to give as much as you do to our community, our council, and our staff. You really are appreciated and valued, so I wanted to say thank you. With that, I wanted to close, saving the best for last. And we do have an executive session this evening, so at this time, I need a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and that motion carries. Thanks for joining us.